The regular meetings order at seven o'clock. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yep.
Councilmember Shelton?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Mayor Payne?
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer. After that, we will have Troop 119 lead us in the salute to the flag. However, we will be retiring the O- flag. So, we're gonna be having the salute to the flag or pledge of allegiance twice. So, just to let you know, it's a little bit different tonight. So, if you'd like to join me in a moment of silent prayer. Um, like I prepared a... ...color for March.
Yeah, there's an eyelid on it, yeah.
Hey, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible... Color guard attention. Color guard for March. Very close colors. Close colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice.
Sign it up.
I do.
Special thanks to Troop 119 for this ceremony of retiring the flag. Um, video statement, please. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sactmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city website at www.ci.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Thank you. At this time, would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? None, okay. Um, now we have a presentation. City Clerk, would you like to introduce the presentation?
Yes.
It's from the Police Department, TIP 411, Dana Wilkinson.
Evening Mayor, from the Council. Tonight, we're proud to do a presentation on a new community-involving tool called TIP 411. And tonight, Administrator Assistant Dana Wilkinson will be doing the presentation regarding this new service that we're offering to the public.
The Police Department has launched the TIP 411 Alert Network, a new interactive way to keep the community connected and informed through opt-in email, text message, and web-published public safety alerts. TIP 411 helps engage the public, talk to citizens where they are, two-way communication in their preferred medium. The new program will also enable the public to report suspicious activities easily through the TIP 411 anonymous text messaging code. A lot of people get their information through social media such as Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, with Facebook having over 150 million users, Twitter over 42 million in the U.S. Concerns for law enforcement are securing access to who posts information on social media sites and alleviating errors created by re-entering alerts to individual media sites by entering the information only once. This system will allow us to relay factual information to the public during in-progress situations, reducing the number of telephone calls into our dispatch center from concerned citizens and the news media. Internally, the TIP 411 program makes creating alerts simple and accurate from one secure location within the Police Department and then forwarded to the public. Your agency, City Hall, Public Works, Parks and Recreation can be the hub for your information in conjunction with the Police Department. For example, information regarding the upcoming winter bird festival could be relayed, or as an example in the next slide. In the case if an emergency, the Police Department can relay information including pictures, suspect and vehicle descriptions within a few minutes of the actual crime, which increases the likelihood of suspect identification and apprehension. We can also send alerts to warn citizens of road closures, hazardous chemical spills, or even the availability of sandbags during a severe storm. The alert we sent out today involves packages being left on doorsteps by UPS, the Postal Service, or FedEx being stolen.
Within the last few days, we've had some issues regarding packages being delivered. In fact, one of the people that's employed by the Police Department fell victim of the different packages ordered from several different places, amazon.com being delivered by several delivery services, being placed on, in fact, the doorstep, and then someone coming up after the delivery person leaves and then picking up that package. The alert that Ms. Wilkinson is talking about was sent out today trying to advise people that maybe they wanted to contact their neighbors, talk to their neighbors if they were not gonna be home, so if a package was expected through the tracking code that they usually give you, that we might be able to stop some of this because obviously those are Christmas presents going to people that they've ordered and they're being picked off by individuals.
The alerts are sent to our website, social media sites, and mapped to Google Maps at the same time. The Google Map will show the location of a specific crime. The alert sent out today was a city-wide alert and therefore the mapping feature was not enabled. The other component of this new technology is the TIP 411 program, which will enable the public to submit anonymous tips to the Police Department via text messaging. While this is not a replacement for dialing 911 in an emergency, this technology will allow interested persons to communicate potentially helpful information. The tipsters simply text their message or tip to 847-411, which is also TIP 411. When police receive the message, they can respond to the tipster who will continue to remain anonymous. The Police Department has no way to access the identity of the individual reporting the information, although we will be able to maintain anonymous two-way communication.
On this right here, an individual can in fact contact the Police Department through this service, give us information, and at the time that they make their tip, they're assigned a anonymous number, and that number is assigned to that individual for the phone number, and we have no way as far as the Police Department to track it back. But each and every tip coming through that individual using that same phone will give the same identifying number, which will give us the availability to re-contact that individual should they have any further information or we might have questions for them.
This system will help us gather information and cultivate ongoing communications with citizens of Galt. By taking advantage of the growing popularity of social media, we will be able to reach more citizens simultaneously and get the 411 out to the public. Interested persons can sign up for the TIP 411 Alert Network for free via a dedicated webpage link on the Police Department website. Through this website, the Galt Police Department will provide information to help maintain and improve community safety. Subscribers can sign up to receive alerts from the Police Department via email or as a text message to a cellphone. They can also opt to receive neighborhood-only or city-wide alerts, as well as surrounding city alerts that are on the Citizen Observer Alert System. We encourage everyone to check out the TIP 411 Alert Network system through the link on the website and then click on the sign-up icon. That concludes our demonstration. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them. Counsel, do we have any questions?
That sounds pretty good.
Sounds like something wonderful thing. Looking forward to it.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I appreciate that. We've been working on it for a while, and I did receive an email through TJ along with several other people to let me know that not only this was going on, but you know, as a reminder, there was a presentation. I told a couple of my neighbors, unfortunately they couldn't make it, but at least maybe they'll be aware of what's going on.
I actually signed up myself today and got the test message, so it works.
Thank you.
Can we get it through email or is it just by text? Either way, text or email. But we have to subscribe first? Mm-hmm. You go in and just click on the icon that's on the website, and it'll say sign up, and you give it your email address and your cellphone if you want to receive text messages that way, and it gives you the link to the Facebook and Twitter as well. Okay. So, when we send a message, it goes out to all of those, all at one time.
Is that a city-wide website or Police Department website?
Um, it goes through the city one, two hours.
Okay.
Any other comments? Uh, public comments, then.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. And the first one I have is Gloria Stemler, and she's speaking on LaHeim.
Welcome, Gloria.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Gloria Stemler, and I am here to represent LaHeim, which is located at the Galt Place on Fourth Street. We need your permission to use the Chaboya Center. We are a group of community citizens bent on serving the community in many ways. We have served the local meals on wheels for over thirty years. We have transported seniors to medical appointments and dialysis to the concilio. We work with local organizations such as the Rotary Club, Senior Club, and the Grange. We support the Sunshine Closet, Project Love, and Meadows Depot. We teach basic cooking and food preservation, as well as basic sewing techniques, including crochet and embroidery. We use donated yardage, yarn, and sample hygiene supplies such as shampoos, toothbrushes, etc. We do not receive any government funds or grants. We receive from the community and give back to the community. We are based in Galt, California, and are not affiliated with any other outside national organization such as the Rotary or Daughters of Isabella. We need to pay the rent. Our income is pennies and a few money raisers such as Bunco and a full-time boutique. Right now, we're in the middle of the walnut season, which we have picked ourselves and processed. We do, um, what we need from you is permission to use your facility at the Chaboya to sponsor a fundraiser consisting of gourmet dinner combined with Bunco in February. We would greatly appreciate your generosity in helping us help our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I have a comment. God love you, Gloria. You are the hardest-working person I know in this city, and I remember when you started off saving pennies and collecting pennies to get this organization going, and if anything and any way I can do to help you, you deserve it. You do a lot for the community in so many ways, and I want to congratulate you on finally getting a place at the Galt Place. It's well-deserved, and you're a well-deserving person, and it's a well-deserved organization.
We really enjoy it because we came from a hole that didn't even have a back door or bathrooms that worked. Now we've got an office, a boutique, sewing room, craft room, and two bathrooms that actually work.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
One would be good, but two's great. Any other questions or comments, whatever? Okay. Gloria, you might just really emphasize that you got started actually on pennies. That's kind of your thing, is collecting pennies, so...
And, well, there are no cans and stuff.
And that too. So, you know, if you wanna empty your pockets and not have so much weight on your purses, remember LaHeim and take your pennies down there.
Yeah, we have a huge penny jar.
And it is the end of the year, so make a charitable donation, and you can write it off on your income tax.
There you go. And I put a brochure on each of your places so you know that we are nonprofit and we are legal.
And you keep us updated on the dinner in February?
Well, first of all, we gotta have permission to use that hall.
I understand, but...
Yeah, and we know they want gourmet, and I think one of the things they wanna is like, uh, uh, we have a lot of people that are vegetarian, so something that they can eat, and I suggested hot dogs, and they said, "Forgive you, Agnes." But we won't have hot dogs.
Okay.
Uh, that's something that we'll have to agendaize and take up at the next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you for...
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Angela Smith. Topic for discussion, crosswalk on Caroline Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Angela Smith, and I am a resident of Galt. It was recently brought to my attention that a potentially dangerous situation exists by the Galt Market. The exact location of which I'm speaking is the crosswalk that is just east of the market exit driveway on Caroline Avenue, right next to the library. The crosswalk runs north-south, and street parking is allowed on both the north and south sides of Caroline. I have a map available if you would like to see it. My concern is the north side of this crosswalk. More often than not, on market days, large vehicles, box trucks, and trucks with large trailers park on the street on the north side of Caroline. This is a very active area on market days normally, this is a very active area on market days normally, and even more so due to the detour for the Central Galt Interchange Project. A lot of people come here from out of town and are not familiar with this area. From my observation, there is less than six feet between the crosswalk and the markings to the parking stall. When a large vehicle is parked there, it creates an obstruction of sight for both pedestrians entering the crosswalk from the north side, as well as the vehicles traveling in an east-down direction on Caroline Avenue. The pedestrian must enter the roadway several steps to see around the large vehicle, and the drivers cannot see the pedestrians until they have already entered the crosswalk. Adding to the obstruction is the curve of the road and a tree that creates shade on the north side, which puts the pedestrian in a shadow. Eachbound drivers cannot see anyone waiting to use the crosswalk from the north side until it's too late. As stated in the MUTCD, the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, Section 3B.18 Parking Space Markings, states guidelines as quotes, "At all intersections, one stall length on each side measured from the crosswalk or end of the curb return should have parking prohibited," unquote. I believe the parking space in the northwest side of this crosswalk should be blocked off on market days due to the obstruction in view for the pedestrian and also drivers going east down and to prevent a potential accident for both the pedestrian and the driver. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I think that's a very good idea. I think we should look into it.
Yes. That's what I was gonna ask her.
I would ask Councilman Shelton, is that something that the Public Safety Committee could look into?
Yes, but I also saw where the chief was writing notes and several of the other staff people, so I'm sure we're gonna get right on it.
Okay.
You skewed it the fact that we meet, you know, like every other month.
Okay. I have to tell you in all honesty, I really don't like any of those big trucks up and down that street, but that's just my opinion.
Uh, Mr. Solis, did we, I believe I had addressed this issue some time ago, and I think, did we not put signs or we don't allow trucks to park over there on those stalls now, is that correct?
Only on Chabola. That's two-hour parking on Chabola. Uh, Caroline is unlimited parking. There is no restrictions on Caroline.
So, it's a different area than what I'm thinking of then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right outside of that.
It's just northeast side of the one-way?
I'm sorry.
It's just to the east of the one-way exit?
Well, it's hard to see around that corner, too.
Oh, okay. It is a different area.
Staff will take a look at it.
Really, I'd like to look at the trucks everywhere on that street.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate that for safety, too.
And it sounds like something will happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys want me to pass it down, Steve?
Yeah, I know where she's talking, but that's great.
Is that it? Um, if you will read the consent calendar, please. We have the minutes of the special and regular meetings of September 6th, 2011, in the City of Galt warrants. I would entertain a motion, unless there are questions about it?
Move to acceptance.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. A vote, please. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously. Schedule matters, we don't have anything, regular calendar, so we're skipping down to the City Council office. First item is the strategic plan. Just to remind you, some time ago, both the City Council and the staff met and set up goals, actually for the next three years, but we're taking them three months at a time?
Six months.
Six months? Six months at a time, and we report back monthly to the citizens and to everybody the progress we're making. So, at this time, we will do that.
The first three-year goal, enhance economic development. The city manager, contingent upon RDA resumption, present to the city council for action a conceptual development agreement for entertainment complex in Old Town.
And currently, we have negotiations with potential developers, ongoing, and a feasibility study to determine viability of projects underway. You can also notice on that page that we have several items that are checked as completed, so we won't review those again. Okay, next item.
Improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. Responsible department is the finance director to review the city's reserve policy to ensure compliance with GASB, and if necessary, present changes to the city council for action.
Okay, the GASB is commonly referred to as GADSP? Am I saying that correctly?
Correct.
And, um, if you've ever looked at the reports we get telling how we're spending our money and where the revenue's coming from, it's pretty confusing if you read the names of the accounts. But now, GADSP is going to identify the accounts that are reserved or committed, and it's more of an accounting thing to put us on the same level, no matter if it's in Galt or if it's in Elk Grove, they're gonna use the same terminology, so it'll be easy to recognize accounts that are for reserve funds or committed funds, such as Measure R, something like that. Um, and our finance director is working towards that completion for March 30th. Is there anything that we need to add to that, I know, or is that pretty clear?
I think you presented the whole fund ballot scenario and our reserve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Increase community engagement. The responsible department is the police chief. Implement the TIP 411 program and electronic messaging systems to notify the community regarding emergencies and events. Social media being updated, training week, 10/17/2011.
Well, that's an easy one. You just had the presentation tonight, and that, next time, that X will be over on the completed side. Okay?
Provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. The responsible department, special project administrator, and the finance director. Develop and implement an online park and recreation application, payment and registration program.
That's been kind of a long process, but we're happy to say that that item is completed also. That's it, okay. Next item, then. Oh, I do want to mention something. These are things that are, these are goals that are actually above and beyond the call of the everyday duties of the staff that they have to perform. And I just want to say, right now, we, in many cases, are working fewer hours with the furlough days and everything, but we're still expecting our staff to complete as much work as they did before. In addition... as much work as they did before in addition to these other goals. So, I just wanna take a moment at the end of this year and say how much we appreciate our staff and their attitude and their fortitude.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, city attorney's office, resolution establishing the hours of operation for city parks.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. At the last city council meeting, the city council expressed the desire to consider changing the hours of operation of city parks. Presented for your consideration this evening is a resolution which, if adopted, would change the hours of operation at all city parks, so the parks would open at 6:00 AM and close at dusk, subject to certain exceptions. The exceptions are that parks would stay open until 10:00 PM for all lighted sports fields when reserved through the Parks and Recreation Department, and also the volleyball courts, tennis courts, horseshoe pit and basketball courts. At Galt Community Park would stay open till 10:00 PM because those facilities have, uh, have lighting available. The resolution will also authorize the city manager or his designated to approve later closing times for special events. Resolution is presented for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this resolution? If not, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
I would accept the resolution establishing the hours of operation for the city parks.
Thank you. Set a second. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Um, motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
City manager's office, the Galt Youth Master Plan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My privilege to present the Galt Youth Master Plan for your consideration this evening. About a month ago, the CAS committee, cities and schools together, met and talked about the completion of the Galt Youth Master Plan, which has been in the works for many years. Um, and the recommendation was to present it to the city council and both school boards for a joint resolution adopting that document as some guiding principles and implementation strategies for addressing youth development, um, from zero through 24, I believe, um, for, for, for Galt, uh, youth. And so, tonight, I'm pleased to present this, this report. It's been, uh, the, most of, a lot of the work was funded using a REACH grant that was funded through Sierra Health Foundation several years ago. Um, both school districts have been very active. I know council members have been very active and it's really been a community-wide effort involving, the, the real thing that I think is unique on here is that the document was largely developed by receiving input from the youth. It wasn't something that was driven by the adults. The adults were there acting more as mentors and guides to help along the process, but it really involved, um, dozens and dozens of youth over several years getting their input about what they felt the, the needs were in the community and how to address those. So I think that's really a, a milestone achievement. And when we went to this CAS meeting, there were representatives from Sierra Health Foundation really acknowledging that effort and indicating that this, this, this plan is becoming a model for other jurisdictions throughout the state of California and other, other cities are pointing to what has happened in Galt over the last couple of years. So it's really, I think, an achievement and something the city should be very proud of. Um, I know, like I said, I know a lot of you, um, had some involvement in this, so I'll certainly, um, let the council have an opportunity to maybe talk a little bit more about the development of this plan, but the recommendation in front of you tonight is that the council adopt this joint resolution of the City of Galt, joint, uh, the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District and the Galt Joint Union High School District to adopt the Galt Youth Master Plan. And the CAS committee will be working towards implementing the plan over the next several years, updating it, and we'll be coming back to the council with updates on how we're doing and through our strategic planning process, which we have another one, another date set in January to go back through these six-month goals. Um, that would be an opportunity for us to take a look at that master plan and see if there's some elements of that that we wanna incorporate in the next, um, strategic planning effort that we're involved in, and the school districts indicated that they would be doing the same thing. Um, we're not alone, and I think our commitment to the youth, I know the school districts have the same feelings and commitment, and so all of us together implementing the plan, I think, is where we're gonna be successful. I'll turn the time back over to the council for questions or comments.
Comments, questions?
Marie, state, you know, what Jason just said. I mean, I would like to add that people that were at the meeting and working, this is one of the very few times when we have multi-agencies and organizations that our, our differences aside, we're working what's best for the youth, along with the youth. I mean, you know, in the community and outside the community. It's very rewarding to me. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get this resolution, yeah.
And if I remember correctly, Councilman Shelton, you've been involved pretty much from the very beginning when we sat in that, uh, that meeting trying to get the REACH grant, and I think it was very impressive, and one of the reasons we got it was because they were able to see this was a true community commitment with the cities and schools working together. Um, I think this is born out of a concern that we had, uh, what seemed to be, uh, an increasing, um, amount of, uh, young people getting involved in gangs. I can remember getting some comments from my neighbors saying twelve-year-olds were being asked to sell drugs, uh, just down the street from where I live. And the more we looked into it, the more we found out that the true answer to this is not so much suppression, but intervention. And so, out of that, I think the whole community has, um, made a real commitment to raising our youth in an environment that will help, uh, keep them off the wrong path and going in the direction where they will become productive, uh, citizens. Um, we want this youth master plan to be a living document. We don't want it to end up on a shelf that says, "Hey, look what we did," and then have it forgotten. So we do plan to do similar to what we did tonight. We will have specific goals and we will report back to the community how we're achieving some of those goals. I'm hoping that we can distribute this youth master plan to our, our Parks and Rec Commission, our youth ma- our youth committee, so that we can all check off as we're making progress towards our goals. Uh, and again, we will be reporting back to the community. Okay, next item. Oh, sorry, sorry. I get so enthusiastic, I forget what we're here for. Uh, okay, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as submitted. Second?
Okay, we have a first and a second. Um, any questions, comments, then I would call for a, roll call vote. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion has passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Cultural and Recreation Department, the 2012 Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks Date.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I know it seems like an odd time to discuss a, an event that's over six months away, but we actually have to lock in a date to hold this event. Um, if council's aware that the Fourth of July lands on a Wednesday in 2012, I'm not sure if you, uh, realize that, but, um, when I was opening the calendar to look, it was kinda disheartening seeing that it landed on a Wednesday. It creates many, uh, logistic issues trying to hold our fireworks and our new Independence Day celebration on a, on a market day. Um, some of those issues that we have is that there is no other facility in the City of Galt that's large enough to hold our fireworks and have the sports facilities for our, our new sporting Independence Day celebration. Um, the other is that if we did hold it on a Wednesday, the traffic from the market would make it almost impossible to use veterans in the sports complex as we planned on doing. We brought forward these, uh, issues to the, the Celebration Committee and the Parks and Rec Commission, and between the two organizations and staff, we've concluded that June 30th would be the best day, which is a Saturday. Um, we felt that that would allow the citizens of Galt to have a full day to enjoy the, the events and a fireworks show. So the recommendation of staff is to approve Saturday, June 30th, 2012, for the city's annual Independence Day celebration and fireworks. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Questions or comments? None?
No, I do wanna thank you for all your work on this already. It does take a lot to start planning it, and we've already had those meetings. And I'm looking forward to the day when actually we can have this on the Fourth of July myself. Um, but, uh, people do need to know that always when it fell on a market day, it wasn't on that, so this isn't something new. This is something that's been going on forever. If the Fourth of July falls on either, I think, Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, is that the way it goes? Or just Tuesday or Monday?
Um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, that, we have to find another time to have it, and, uh, as you said, we decided that Saturday was a good day because that would give other people time to go to other festivals or whatever they wanna do, or just recruit the next day from it, so we could have it all day with all the things that we've got planned.
Now you go to the quarter next year.
Any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion on the recommendation.
I motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Have a first and a second? Roll call vote, please. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item.
Also under Cultural and Recreation Department, transfer of the Junior Warrior Football and Cheer Program from the Galt Parks and Recreation Department.
Mayor and City Council, in, uh, 1988, the Dry Creek Area Youth Sports Organization dissolved, leaving the, the then-chief football program without a home. Although tackle football is, uh, not a typical Parks and Rec program due to the risk, liability and competitiveness of the sport, the Parks and Rec Department stepped up and took the program into, um, so not to displace the youth. At one time, it was necessary for the city to run the program, but staff now feels that , uh, the Junior Warriors are better run, uh, by an independent group. This model has already been successfully run by other organizations in Galt, including the Junior Hawks Football Program, which competes in the same league as the Junior Warriors. Um, staff has met with the Junior Warrior Board and they have agreed, uh, to separate from the city with a 3-0 vote by the board. Um, staff has taken this also to the Parks and Rec Commission, and they have also voted 3-0, uh, to approve the separation. Staff is recommending the council adopt a resolution dissolving the City of Galt Junior Warrior Football Advisory Board, authorize the donation of football equipment subject to the execution of an agreement, and amending the fee schedule for the Parks and Rec Department to delete fees and charges for the youth football cheer program. I also have the current Junior Warrior Board President in the stands if you would like him to answer any questions.
And who is that?
That is Kevin Barone.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or, or comments for Kevin? No?
No, for Armando.
Okay, well, Armando, I'm sorry.
And I'm embarrassed, I, I really should've called you first, and I'm really sorry because I have a question about something here, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the equipment that you're going to, um, donate, um, to the Junior Warriors, um, did it come from the City of Galt or was it, is it Warrior equipment?
It, it was purchased by the City of Galt.
Um, is the Junior Hawks also an organization, a football organization in the City of Galt?
They are also an organization.
So maybe the stuff be divided up?
I-
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
The staff, I, I believe staff feels that, um, in a good faith effort for the separation, it should go to the Junior Warriors.
Okay.
The, the Hawks should have all of their equipment in place already.
Okay.
Um, by, by the separation, they would have to start all over and I just feel it's-
Sure, I'm very sorry. I know I should've called you ahead of time, I'm sorry.
That's a good question. Any other questions, comments? Do you need to say anything, Kevin? Okay. Then you have heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution. Can we do this, ask Steve, as, as written, number one, two and three, we can do these together?
Um, yes, it's, uh, one resolution with three action events contained in the resolution.
That's submitted.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Shelton and Vice Mayor Powers. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item.
Under the Police Department, the Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report.
Mayor, council. Um, it's a requirement as far as an annual report regarding the Measure R Committee, and tonight with us are two members of the committee, and the gentleman doing the actual presentation of this is the chair for the Measure R Committee, Tony Lara.
Welcome, Tony. Good to see you.
Well, good evening, um, I don't know that there's much of a presentation, I know you have the report with you. Um, basically, uh, I'm new to the committee, this is my first year, and we meet on a quarterly basis, there's, uh, five members, and, uh, we review the, uh, financial reports as they come in, and I know you have before you, uh, the fiscal report for 2010, 2011. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? None?
None.
Tony, this is too easy.
This staff makes it very easy. Everything is very-
Here's your sweat.
Having been on the Measure R Committee myself, I know that there's a lot of work involved in it, and they always do a very good job.
Yeah, I think, uh, really the work comes from, uh, the city staff, you know, we just come there, all the paperwork's together for us, so they make it very easy, chief and all his staff, so.
Okay, if there are no questions, is there a motion on the recommendation? Did you wish to say something?
Um, the, the recommendation, just to clarify, is to approve the Measure R Oversight Committee Annual Report as presented.
Aye, gentlemen.
Second.
We have a first and a couple of seconds, and if there's no other discussion for Mr. Lara, I'll call for the vote. Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and thank you so much.
Thanks.
Communications, I, does anyone have any letters they wanna share or any written communications?
From council or staff? I mean, the staff or-
Council can as well. Nope?
I just wanted to, buddy, have a good holiday.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, the-
Yeah, yeah. This is under communications.
Oh, communications.
But that's okay.
You only lost here. I've been asking staff for it already, where do you mean?
You can never get too much, uh, good wishes, so that's okay.
That's right, 'cause I'll do it again at the end.
Now then, we are going to adjourn from the regular meeting to redevelopment agency. Roll call, please.
Board members, Powers? Here, Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
And Payne?
Here. Public comment? Have no sheets? Uh, would you like to read the consent agenda, please?
Minutes of meeting of December 6th, 2011, and the redevelopment agency warrant.
Are there any questions or discussion on that item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne, sorry.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. We will now adjourn from the redevelopment agency and reconvene to the regular Galt City Council meeting, which brings us to the city courts' report.
Just a few items, um, on the calendar. December 23rd and 26th are holidays for the city, and the city offices are closed. December 27th to 29th are furloughs, and city offices are again closed. We have a holiday on January 2nd. Uh, the Galt City Council Youth Committee will be meeting January 2nd in city council chambers, and that brings us to January 3rd, the city council meeting, which has been canceled.
Comments by staff?
Yes.
Okay, uh, city manager.
Some exciting news. We're making really good progress on the Central Galt Interchange Project, if you haven't noticed, uh, A Street Bridge will open on Thursday, eh, as well as C Street.
Say that again?
A Street, the new A Street Bridge will open Thursday.
Go across it?
Yep, but C Street Bridge will close.
Right.
And then they'll start the demolition of that in January. The C Street right out here in front of City Hall, that'll open up to be able to get, go up C Street and connect to the A Street Bridge. So now, if you're coming southbound on 99, you can get off Central Galt instead of having to turn on A Street, you can either turn on A or continue down to C Street. So you have better access into Central Galt from the freeway.
Aren't we ahead of our schedule for A Street? I was thinking we weren't scheduled to complete it.
We're doing well.
Yeah.
We're doing very well. The good weather has certainly helped. We haven't had much rain. I don't think we've had any rain in a little while, so it's been nice. Been able to make some good progress, so still, you know, a good chance that we'll get bogged down when the rains hit in January and February, but that's typical, so far so good.
That's on the 29th. Very good.
What's that?
Twenty ninth.
No, twenty seconds. The opening of A Street? This Thursday.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Wow. Yeah, wow.
You can tell, they've been working on it, doing the striping, they got some of the streetlights up. It's really, some of the new signals even.
I thought they were going to have to put another layer down.
They're making some good progress. There are, some of this work is temporary. So a lot of it, they're going to go back at the very end, put another layer down, do re-striping. So a lot of it is, but it's enough to drive on. And so they'll be rerouting some stuff.
That's great.
Yep.
Then on C Street, will they be taking it down? The overpass?
Take down the overpass.
Will they do that, like during the day or how?
No, overnight. It'll take several days, three or four days, and it'll be coming down.
On 99? All that stuff is on it? Wow.
Yeah.
Stay off 99 for a while.
Yeah. Everybody's going to be really involved in that.
That'll be something.
Should be interesting.
I want to go out and watch it.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we could have the exact time, I'd love to be out there to watch.
Okay, anything else from the staff?
Some pictures.
Yeah, history. I want to see you out there at three o'clock in the morning taking pictures.
I think you're our photographer, aren't you?
No comment. I'm not going out there at three o'clock in the morning.
All right. Any other comments from staff? No? Okay, then we will go to the council members and starting with Vice Mayor Powers.
Well, I guess I'm going to have to kind of talk about my own thing, but I want to thank everybody for coming to the senior luncheon that we had, South County Services. We had over 200 seniors there and it was a free luncheon for everyone. It was last Thursday. And I'm very thankful to city staff, Parks and Rec, for having it all ready when we got there. And I have to say, I'm really impressed with the new stuff with Parks and Rec because when you send in now your little diagram of how you want everything, I got there that morning, it was all done. I was like, whoa, this is awesome, something's really great. Want to thank Jason and all of the City Council and Liz for coming down and serving the seniors. And look forward to seeing everybody next year and I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Councilman?
Singleton.
Singleton.
As I said before, I hope everybody has just a wonderful holiday. Hold your friends and your family close and give them a little extra love on this weekend. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Shelton.
Yes, I wanted to comment on the seniors' dinner. I've helped Mary Lou and her group every year. I don't know whether I volunteer or you volunteer me, but you know, the rewards that I get for doing that is just unbelievable, you know, of the seniors and the individuals of serving, just thanking, and again, it's like, you know, working with the CAS and the Youth Committee, that group. It's just extremely rewarding, you know, we do what we can, you know, while we're here. The other thing I'd just like to add is, from my family to your family, Merry Christmas. Won't see it probably some of you until after the New Year, so Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I just want to reiterate the same thing. The senior luncheon was a blast. Very lively group out there, so they may be seniors in age, but not in heart. I'd also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to touch on this and I'll bring it up again later. On January 24th, we're going to have a meeting regarding the routes of our buses. And I see we have three of our best networking people out there from our Neighborhood Watch, Melanie and the others. And I want you to help me get the word out to attend this meeting on January the 24th. It'll be, I believe, here at the City Hall on the...
County Exchange Center?
Yeah, yeah. You know, when you have a town like Galt that we have not so many jobs here, most people have to drive out of town to their jobs. We don't have a college here, so our students have to drive out of town to go to college. And I don't mean to say what we don't have, but I'm going to make a point here. And we don't have hospitals, so we have to leave town to get all those services. So our bus transit is really important to us. And the fact is, if we don't change our habits and start using our mass transportation, we will lose it. That's a fact. If we don't have enough people that use it, then ultimately we will lose it. And one of the things that I'm excited about, one of the routes we're proposing at this meeting is a direct route to Consumis College.
Very good.
So instead of having to get off at the Shell Station on Elk Grove Boulevard and transfer over to another bus to get to Consumis College, we're going to have a direct route. And it's planned to go down Bruceville, which has all sorts of opportunities for us. You've got all the medical facilities, Kaiser, actually be going by Target Shopping Center. Not that we want people shopping out of town, we'll be getting our own Walmart maybe one of these days. But in the meantime, we're looking at trying to be more customer-serving. But if, you know, if we make all these efforts and it's not used, then we'll lose it, that's just a fact. So it's important to get your input at this meeting and then there'll be another one in February called the Unmet Transit Needs. So ladies, I'm going to need your help getting the word out. And if there are no other comments...
You have a comment?
Oh, oh.
I'd thirty.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Can I just ask a question of the council unrelated to the short-range transit plan? During the public comment period, there was a comment or there was a presentation about LaHeim and the use of the Chabola Center. There was a comment about do we need to bring that back? And would the council wanted to consider allowing LaHeim to use Chabola, that would have to come back. And we'd like some direction from council on exactly, you know, what you would like us to present back to the council. Right now, there is a longstanding, I don't know longstanding, but council several years ago adopted a policy where the Chabola Center was not rented out to any groups. The Littleton was reserved for rental and Chabola was reserved for senior programs as well as our basketball programs and other things. If the council wants to change that or just review that policy, we can certainly bring that back and present that to the council, if that's the direction from the council.
I would like to ask the council members if they would consider allowing us to bring that back and reviewing it. I have to say that I think, my own opinion is, LaHeim is a special, unique group. They only serve the people of Galt. They only get their funds from the people of Galt. And it's the people of Galt that own the buildings, the Littleton, the Chabola Center, all of them. So I would like to have it reviewed. We're not necessarily going to make a decision one way or the other in favor or against. I think we should, I think LaHeim deserves us to take a look at it. So do we need a vote on that or can we get a consensus or...
I recommend you take a motion directing staff to bring the matter back for consideration at the next meeting.
Okay. I will make that motion. Can the mayor make that motion?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote please.
Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye. So staff, I think the direction is to bring back the information, whatever...